Joan, if you want to start the meeting.
Welcome to the Board of Supervisors of Elections Public Forum. I am Board Chair Joan Moore. I would like the rest of the board members to introduce themselves. Bill Albright will start with you.
Sorry, Bill Albright.
Joyce.
Joyce Albright.
Bill Snyder.
Bill Snyder.
Ty.
Hello, I'm Ty Hardaway.
And Tom?
Tom Marchison.
The topic to be discussed this evening is the voting methods for the 2021 city election. We will be following the order of the posted agenda. The first item on the agenda is a presentation from staff, followed by the board comments, mayor and council comments, public comments, and board closing comments. For board members and staff, please mute your mic if you are not speaking. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand and I will call on you. I will now turn the presentation over to Lynn Borg and Lauren Klinger for staff presentation.
Thank you, Joan. And tech staff, if you could bring up the PowerPoint, it starts at packet page number two. And while they are bringing that up, I do want to welcome everyone's evening to the form of the Board of Supervisors of Elections. The city staff was tasked by the Board of Supervisors of Elections and the Mayor Council to take a look at the city's past voting practices and methods that we can use in the future. When we look at this, we've looked at a couple specific factors. And first and I think probably most importantly is we wanted to look at methods that would maximize voter turnout. We also want to make the voting experience as easy as possible for our residents when they go into vote. But I think finally, we also wanted to consider the cost and take a look at how that may impact the conduct of the election. You go to the next page, please. So tonight, we're going to kind of briefly cover a little bit of the city's past election history as some different options of how we might conduct the 2021 election, and then also look at the budget costs for each of those options. Next page, please. So in the past, the city has used what we refer to as an in-person voting process, where we did have a absentee ballot process where a voter could request an absentee ballot application. An application would then be sent to them. They would have to complete that. They would then be sent a ballot if they were verified, and then they would mail in that absentee ballot. A voter could also vote at an early voting session. In the past, we have tended to have two early voting sessions prior to the elections, and we've conducted early voting since 2013. And then voters could vote on Election Day at polling site. And the city has historically had six polling sites located around the cities. I mean, I think if we go back far historically, we have one. And then as the city grew and the population grew, we did add polling places to make it more convenient for our voters. Next slide, please. So here's just some information about the 2019 city election. Do want to note that it was an uncontested election, which is probably why you see the voter turnout number as so low at 6.54%. But you can see that we did have, at that time, 36,526 registered voters in the city. That has increased since then to 37,746 registered voters. So we've had an increase of about 1,200 registered voters since the 2019 election. In 2019, we had two early voting sessions with 203 people voting at those sessions. 117 absentee ballots were received and 32 provisional ballots. We did have same-day voter registration for the first time during the 2019 election, and 24 people took advantage of that process. But you'll see by far the vast majority of votes, 2,388 were cast on Election Day itself. The next slide, please. So we did want to take a look historically at our voter turnout. So we went back to the last six elections. And the data is here, and it's broken down by the city's six polling places, as well as early voting, absentee, and provisional ballots. The trend that you can see here, we had two uncontested elections, being the 2013 and the 2019 election. And clearly, the voter turnout numbers in those elections is very small. It was 5.4% in 2013. And then certainly, our recent election was at 6.54%. So I think the clear trend there is when we have an uncontested election, we have a very small percentage of our voters who do come out and vote. When you look at the other numbers, we do average 10.72% of voter turnout in contested elections. If you look at all these elections together, we have historically had higher voter turnout in years where we've had a contested mayoral election. Next slide, please. The next two slides show some graphics just to show you a little, give you a little bit of information as to where the voters in the city come from and how they vote. As we said earlier, we have six polling places in the city. This particular graphic breaks it down by polling site. You will see the smallest little polling site is showing 20.3% voter turnout. That's Asbury Methodist Village. They do tend to have, they've historically had the largest amount of voter turnout in the city at that particular polling place. Catlins, which is as 7.3% voter turnout, has also historically been one of our larger turnout areas. For the voter turnout in the Crown Farm area, which shows at 4.6% voter turnout, you'll see that's a smaller number, but that's also a newer neighborhood. So we anticipate increasing numbers in that area as more residents move in and also more of those residents who move in do become registered voters. Next slide, please. This shows graphically some of the changes from the voter turnout from between the 2017 and 2019 election. The voting trends stayed fairly stable during this period of time. Next slide, please. So I want to turn now to the different voting processes that we are considering for the upcoming election. Certainly, the first option would be to conduct our election as we have historically done in the past, you know, with an in-person voting option, both early voting and Election Day voting at our six polling places. But then with also with an absentee ballot process, which we do intend to rebrand as just as a mail-in ballot process. One of the other options is to have a totally mail-in voting process. How these work is a voter would receive a ballot by mail without having to request one. It would automatically be mailed out to all registered voters. They would then complete their ballot, place it in an envelope, you sign an affidavit, and you mail it or put it in a drop box back. Some jurisdictions have also allowed or had like one polling place on Election Day itself. Next slide, please. This type of mail, this type of voting has been recognized and held in a number of the western states for many years. Oregon was back as far as 2000. And then, you know, Washington, Colorado, California coming later. And then in Hawaii, they used this for the first time in their 2020 election. There also are a number of counties and municipalities who have used this, but it's not in other states, but not on a statewide basis. In our most recent general election, the 2020 general election, due to the pandemic, a lot of jurisdictions did modify their voting methods and used at least a partial mode of mail-in voting process. In Maryland, in 2019, Rockville became the first Maryland municipality to hold its election by mail. They did also have one polling place being their city hall, where voters could vote in person also on Election Day. So next slide, please. Again, since Rockville is our closest municipality who did use vote by mail, we wanted to take a little bit of a look at how that made a change. So we have shown here the Rockville voter turnout for their past elections. I do want to note, if it looks a little odd, that they used to vote every two years up until 2015, and then they changed to a four-year election cycle. So that's why there's a little bit of a gap between 2015 and 2019. But you'll see before their 2019 election, they generally ranged in the 16%, 17% voter turnout. Where in 2019, they were up to 29%. So they did have a significant increase in their voter turnout when they went to the vote by mail process. Next slide, please. So we did want to talk a little bit about costs here because you can see that going to the vote by mail process for Rockville did come with some significant increases in costs. So in Gaithersburg, generally, our elections have run between $15,000 and $55,000 to conduct the election itself. Prior to 2019, when Rockville conducted its elections in a similar mode that Gaithers did with in-person and polling places, their cost for their election was almost $105,000. With their vote-by-mail election, we have not received the final numbers for their election, but we do understand that they're in excess of $218,000 for that election. All right, if we can go to the next slide, please. So one of the other options is to go to what we call a hybrid election. And probably the best example of this is the general election that was just conducted in the presidential election. So for that election, I'm sorry, I was got an email from our IT staff. Apparently, some of our public who was trying to attend had a little bit of an issue with connecting. So there may have been a five-minute delay for individuals from the public who attended may have missed the first couple meetings, the first couple meetings of minutes of the meeting. But they are now connected and able to listen and participate. So hybrid election, how that would work would be that any voter could request a ballot by mail and where you would receive a ballot application automatically. So again, in the general election that just occurred, you were mailed a ballot application. If you completed that application, then you would subsequently receive a ballot after the application has been verified. So then the voter would mark their ballot, place it in a separate envelope. There would be the affidavit that typically, you know, it would be processed similar to how we know an absentee ballot is processed. Then the voter could return the ballot either via mail or at a drop box. The hybrid portion of that is that the voter could also return the ballot at a voting center where they could vote in person on Election Day. So you would have either option. You could mail in your ballot. You could put your ballot in a drop box, or you could come in and vote in person on Election Day. Next slide, please. So we've looked at these three different types of voting methods. And I do want to initially say, you know, there are, you know, kind of lots of options within these different methods. So the estimates we have on costs are purely estimates itself. So we looked at, if we conducted our election the way that we have historically done in the past, we estimate the cost would be about $67,000. You may note that on an early slide, you saw the cost of our last election was about $54,000. So probably wondering what the increase, because that's a $13,000 increase. There's two causes about. One, there's about a $1,000 increase just on cost of equipment, postage, and some other things. The biggest increase, about $12,000, really just reflects a little bit more accurate budgeting. In the past, our Public Information Office has produced and mailed the voter guide, and the cost of doing that has come out of their budget versus out of the election budget. So we wanted to capture all of those costs to make sure that we showed the true cost of conducting the election. So if we did a total mail-in election, next slide, please. We are looking at a cost of what we're estimating at about $223,000. Again, a significant increase over our current cost. Most of those costs are really the cost of the mailing and the postage. That does, you know, definitely increase the cost significantly. I do want to let the board know that we did contact our vendors of equipment that we've used in the past and did ask them if we wanted them to completely process the mail-in ballots, what additional cost that would be. Currently, as you know, the city staff is responsible for mailing out ballot applications, ballots. And, you know, we receive those back, and then the staff does process those with oversight from the board. If we were to have our vendor do all of that, that would increase the cost an additional 49, approximately 49,000, bringing the total cost of the election to $272,000. So again, that's an option for discussion. This particular estimate also assumes that we would have one voting center on Election Day itself. If we would choose to have more than one voting center, for each additional voting center, it does add about $3,500 of cost per voting center. So again, that would be an additional cost, you know, depending on what methodology the board would choose to recommend. Then go to the next slide. So this is the hybrid election model, where all voters would receive an absentee ballot application. So there are increased costs for this because there is additional mailing, but not as much additional mailing as mailing out the ballots to all residents. So the cost to conduct this type of election is $123,000 or almost $124,000. And again, this assumes that there's one voting center where people can vote in person on Election Day. So again, if we have additional voting centers, that would increase the cost about $3,500 per voting center. Again, we did ask our vendor if they would process all of the mail-in ballots. The increase in the cost would be about an additional $46,000. So that would bring up the cost for this type of election to about $180,000. Next slide, please. One of the other things we did want to take a look at is the cost for candidates to run for election. Historically, candidates in the city of Gaithersburg have raised between, again, approximately $3,000 to, I think the high was about $9,000 to conduct their election. So we did want to take a look at Rockville, and I will say even their baseline is significantly higher to run for election in Rockville than in Gaithersburg. But when you look at the difference between the 2015 and the 2019, you know, when they went from an in-person election to a mail-in election, there are significantly higher costs for campaigning during a mail-in election. And really, this arises from, you know, typically, candidates focus on people who tend to vote in their mailings and their campaign activities, where if every registered voter receives a ballot, candidates have to take a little bit different approach and reach out to all residents or potential voters versus have a little bit more targeted focus in their campaigning. So I think that, you know, that increases their campaign cost and their mailing cost. So I think that's what shows the reflection. So we just use Rockville as an example of how it could impact our candidates in the event we were to go to a all-mail-in election. Next slide, please. So I did just want to remind everyone again of, these are our current sites, the ones that we've used for, you know, the past several elections. We have the six polling sites. Next slide. And we had looked at some potential changes to the polling sites.
Sorry.
That's okay. We had looked at some potential changes to the polling sites if we were to conduct an in-person election again. And again, that's just a reminder, this would be a decision that we would make after, there would be a decision as to what type of election we wanted to conduct. So next slide, please. So if we would do a voting center or a hybrid election, and we were to look at one large voting center versus the six polling places, I think staff has looked at the Activity Center at Bora Park as being the prime example of that. We would use the gyms there. And then the meeting rooms could be used by the BOSE to start processing the mail-in ballots during the day of the election. This was, the Activity Center was used as a voting center during the last general election. And I think the feedback was generally, you know, pretty good that it worked fairly well, and it was one of the more popular voting centers in the county. Next slide, please. So the last thing I did just want to touch on is the next steps in the process. Certainly, for everyone in the public, there is a survey that is open that asks a number of questions about the election and how voters prefer to vote. The survey is open until December 31st at 5:00 PM. And you can access that by going to www.gaithersburgmd.gov/elections. Or you can certainly submit written comments to the city@cityelections@gaithersburgmd.gov through December 31st. And that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions for staff? Say no questions. You're on quiet group so far. All right. If that's the case, I would ask the tech team to pull up the members of the mayor and council who have joined and see if they have any comments or questions that they would like to ask. I'm sorry, before we go to the mayor and council, it looks like Ty has a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't have a question for staff. I did have some comments, if this is an opportunity for that. I just want to, when we're looking at the costs and we're looking at the impact of elections, I just want to remind everyone that Rockville is a little better able to absorb this because they are now in a four-year cycle, whereas Gaithersburg remains in a two-year cycle. And I think that's something to keep in mind as we compare the numbers. I just want to say that pre-COVID, we began talking about how we're going to look at this next election. And it's not just about how we handle things in a pandemic. It's about increasing voter participation. So this is something we've been talking about for quite a while. And as I've mentioned before to this group in public meetings, I think we do have an opportunity to increase voter turnout utilizing a hybrid method, which would save us a lot of money. Instead of sending ballots to everyone, it would be ballots by request, very similar to how the general was conducted just last month. Thanks.
Bill? Bill Snyder?
Did we ever look at or discuss holding elections? Because Ty referenced it, but he didn't ask the question. Every four years instead of every two years to save us money? By the way, I agree with Ty in terms of a hybrid. I think that that's, it hopefully will increase participation without exponentially increasing our costs. Say it's about $100,000. But did we ever look at holding elections only every four years instead of every two?
That was something that the board looked at, but it's been quite a few years ago. It's probably been eight to 10 years ago since we last looked at that. You know, certainly, there's an advantage to that as in cost savings. The disadvantage is you have all candidates run at once. You potentially have a lot of turnover and lose, you know, a little bit of that historical knowledge. So again, there's pros and cons of both. And I mean, I think that's certainly something that we could take a look at if the board would want us to do a little further research on that issue. Anyone else from the board before we go to the mayor and council? Okay, all right, seeing none. We will turn to the mayor and council if you would like to, if you have questions or comments. Again, please raise your hand. Go ahead, Joan.
All right, thank you, Lynn. And I want to thank the members of the Board of Supervisors of Elections for all the work you're doing and for inviting us to be part of the process here. This is a bit of a strange circumstance because we have to plan for this election and we have to get our budget in by, what is it, February, Lynn? Early February, we have to submit budgets for this activity. And we don't fully know what the situation's going to look like in November of 2021. Hopefully, it looks great, but we don't know for sure. And so, you know, hence, we're here and, you know, council members are joining this meeting, and we're really interested to see how this turns out. I feel it's a little bit awkward for me or council members to sort of opine at this point because I don't want to, you know, you got, the Board of Supervisors is ultimately going to come to us with a recommendation. It feels awkward for us to weigh in on what will eventually become your recommendation to us. But I'm interested to hear how Mike and Ryan handle this particular balance. And I enjoyed the presentation, and I'm going to withhold my comments for now unless people really want them. And, you know, Mike and Ryan go right ahead.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I just had a couple of questions, Lynn. I guess, you know, one of the ways to look at the budget is what are we, what is the cost per voter? Do we have that, a sense of that in terms of Rockville? I know the most recent election increased turnout quite a bit when it was entirely by mail voting. So, you know, part of your expense is basically how you distribute the cost over the number of people that participate. If we're looking at greater participation, then, you know, there may be an economy of scale. So I don't know, you know, we could certainly easily calculate the cost per voter the way we do it now. But it would be interesting to see whether the scale of the election, the totally male election in Rockville saved money in terms of the cost per voter. So that's my first question. I guess the other comment would be about polling places. If we have an actual polling place on Election Day, I think it's actually important to have one on each side of 270. That's still kind of a real physical. restraint or barrier to to some, so. I think we would need to have at least two of those. And the question would be if we had two of those, what would? We've always had a a voting, a polling place at Asbury, largely because it's it's a closed community and whether we would continue that as well. So that's just the the comment there. And I think that, you know, the hybrid sounds like a reasonable plan. And I guess the other question is whether we would have, as the state did and the county did, is whether we would have early voting centers as well as the center on the polling place on Election Day. Whether that would be something that, you know, we've done that, I think successfully in terms of the ability to pull it off, we've done that for the last three or four elections, so. You know, another question related to that, you didn't really address that in the presentation, so. Those are my questions and and comments.
I'll address some of them, but probably not all of them. The cost per voter, we can give you that data. I I know I looked at that at one point and I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but there under the Rockville model, there was an increase in the cost per voter. But because of the increased turnout, I mean, it wasn't a huge disparity between the old cost and the new cost. But we'll certainly run those numbers and and provide their specific numbers for you. I'll take your polling, at least two polling places is, you know, a comment that that the board will consider as they move forward. And certainly, you know, Asbury is a really good question because you know, certainly we've accommodated them for a number of years and had a polling place there because it is a closed community and also because of some of the mobility, you know, issues and transportation issues that many of the residents there do have. So that would be certainly something that we would have to look at. I think we did, and I apologize if my presentation didn't didn't state it, but I mean, I think the intention would be if we used a method that had, you know, some type of in-person voting, that that would include both early voting, early voting component and an Election Day component. Ryan?
Excellent. I'll just jump in with some general thoughts. I agree with the mayor that it's a bit of an awkward situation where we're waiting to hear from the input from our hardworking board and members of the public and staff. So I'll speak also in just sort of the general terms of principles and priorities and let the specific recommendations come forward through the process as they normally would, and then we can talk about them as they come before the mayor and council. As a sort of corollary to what Mike said, I think we're not just looking at the cost per voter. I think we need to look more broadly at the relative cost to benefit analysis of increasing significantly the turnout, which goes beyond just looking at the individual cost per voter. Because I think our premise fundamentally is that we should, you know, our goal is that we should be trying to make it easier to vote with, you know, an effort to, you know, within reason, make it more accessible, particularly if there's some level, hopefully not, but if there's some level of of quarantining or partial quarantining that continues into the fall of 2021. And again, within reason, we have to balance it. We can't go to, you know, the extremes where the cost is going to be so excessive that it's it's not going to be reasonable or doable. But barring that, I think we need to really focus on, within reason, how do we make it easier for people to vote while still maintaining the security of the voting process? I think this year and and other jurisdictions in years prior, it's been pretty clearly proven that mail voting works and is secure. I agree that we still need some in-person option and some early voting in-person option, but as Lynn's prior answer to Mike indicated, I think even if we were to go with a much more extensive mail voting system, we would still have some element of in-person voting and some element of early in-person voting, which I think as a general principle I would support. I think that needs to be an option. And I think we need to just continue to bear in mind, how do we make it more accessible, more equitable and easier to vote while still maintaining some security as a baseline? That should be sort of our guiding principle, and I'm eager to hear from the public what they think. But one thing that I will say, it seems to me, is that if we add more layers of bureaucracy and administration, there's always the chance that that makes it a little bit more difficult for some people to go through the process to vote. You know, our existing process requires people to apply for an absentee ballot, then get the absentee ballot, then mail in the absentee ballot, which is a couple of additional steps from other jurisdictions where they just get the ballot in the mail and they either send it back or they don't and they vote in person. And that seems to remove one or two additional administrative and bureaucratic steps. I don't know how that affects cost, but that might be something to consider as well. But again, at the same time, we we want to continue to make sure that the process is secure. So if we do have to have one or two additional bureaucratic steps to ensure that security as balanced against accessibility and encouraging and allowing more people to vote, I'll be interested to hear what the recommendations are.
All right, thank you. Loriann or Neil, do you want, do you have questions, comments?
Sure.
Go ahead, Loriann.
Thank you, Neil. So thank you again for the presentation and while I know it's a bit premature for us to comment before we see the results of the survey. I did have questions about the the survey and how many people. How can we, I guess, ensure that only one person is filling out the survey at a time? Like, is there a way to track for multiple submissions from a single individual or we?
The the survey is tracked based on a URL basis, so if you have completed it once, it will not allow you to complete it a second time.
Okay, okay. And I know someone, I believe, Bill mentioned moving the elections to every four years. I know that Tacoma Park actually moved their election to a presidential year. And so I'm wondering if there was any thought into moving the election time if we were to consider a four-year election cycle? If we're trying to increase turnout, you know, presidential years are the busiest times for voters to get engaged and they would just have a bit longer of a form, but yeah, it would be interesting to see what the costs would be if we combined it and then attached it to the four-year cycle with the presidential campaign. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
I know, I did want to follow up on one comment that Loriann made, and again, we looked at moving to the presidential year, but again, it's been at least eight or 10 years ago. It's been quite a while back. But a couple of years ago, the Maryland State Legislature did adopt a bill that if a municipality did have their elections on the presidential election cycle, there is a provision that the state would would run the municipal election and then build back the costs to the municipality. Not 100% sure how they take a look at those costs, but you know, again, that's something that we could take a look at a little bit more closely. Okay, thank you. Say, Neil?
All right, my turn. So first of all, relating to Loriann's comment, I would be concerned about considering the presidential election cycle because we'd be so far down ballot that we would be, it would be difficult to get people's attention. We're we're seeing in the the comments from recent elections that school board races, which are very important and judgeship races are not getting the level of scrutiny by voters that the presidential governor gubernatorial, senatorial elections and so forth are getting, so. And plus, I'd be concerned over the chargeback issue and whether the state would calculate those on a fair basis or we would pay more than our fair share. We've seen that in other areas. But going back to what I really wanted to comment on, a couple of observations from some of the slides. I think the 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 cost per candidate was a little bit overstated in the Rockville elections because of the slate numbers being duplicated across the five candidates, so. But even so, it's probably more like $40,000 and not $60,000 per candidate, but that's still a considerable increase as you've seen. I think I've raised nine or 10,000 on a campaign and that's kind of at the high end of what we've typically seen. I'd be very concerned about having to try to raise $40,000 in the city of Gaithersburg for an election. And if we're considering going to a an election system that requires that kind of expense, we probably ought to think about about public financing, matching campaign funds type system like the county has, but that's probably a can of worms. We don't want to open right now, given that we have a tight deadline to make some decisions. In terms of polling places, I think if we're really going to focus people's attention on voting by mail, then one polling place should be fine in Bora Park would be my choice. It's not that big of a city and as much as I'd love to have a polling place in my neighborhood, it it takes seven minutes, I think, door to door to get from my house to Bora Park. And that's, and I'm near the border of the city on one side, so I don't think it would be too much of a burden. But plus, I mean, if we have to really reach out to a significantly larger number of voters, you know, 10,000 or 15,000 people actually casting ballots, figure out who they are, knocking on all those doors. The burden on the candidates is very significant at that point, so you don't want to over overburden the system. In general, oh, I have one question about the cost structure, which is that did the cost estimate that you gave assume a separate mailing of the ballot and the voter guide? Because it would seem like it would be, it'd make a lot of sense to combine those two into one mailing and save the additional postage cost there. What was, what was the thinking when those numbers were put together?
Yeah, we did. That that's something that we did discuss on the the staff level. Currently, the voter guide is mailed via bulk to households versus to registered voters. So obviously, we would have to, if we wanted to do a combined mailing, that would have to go as a first-class mailing. It would have to go to each each registered voter versus each household. But we did, that is something that that we did take a look at. The the estimated costs that were prepared for this evening did assume separate mailings of those two items. But that's something, and that's why these are very estimated tentative budgets. Because I mean, that is something that we have considered and, you know, would, we would be able to reduce some of the cost based on that.
And a question, and I'm not sure if this has been thought through, but if we went to a hybrid system where people had to request ballots, would the information on who requested ballots be made available to candidates so that they knew who to reach out to?
If we went with the hybrid, a a absentee ballot application would go to every registered voter. But we would still track who actually requested ballots, so that would be available to candidates.
Okay. So in general, while I I tend to prefer in general ways to save money whenever possible, I think for the sake of democracy, I would lean in the direction of a fully vote-by-mail system to get the maximum number of voters going, but I'd want to try to put some method mechanisms in place so that candidates, and not just incumbent candidates, but any, any candidate would have an easier time. Like to point out a couple of quick things before I go. One is that while Rockville's turnout grew dramatically in this last election cycle, a part of that was due to vote by mail. I think a large part of it was due to the highly contested nature. Not only were there two slates of 10 can of 10 candidates total, but there were a lot of individuals who ran as well. So now, as we've seen here in Gaithersburg, the more the the more of a contest there is, the more interest there seems to be from the voting population. And finally, what I didn't see in as part of the presentation was any analysis of what the most recent election cycle, not the Rockville cycle, but the the primary and general election cycles, which were largely conducted by mail, have taught us. And I don't know if that's been, if there's been a time to analyze that or if there's an opportunity to have that discussion between now and when the final decision needs to be made in a couple of months. You're muted.
Sorry. On your last question, we did get some very preliminary numbers from the county board of elections that they received from the state board of elections on the general election. And, you know, clearly, the the mail-in component of the the last general election, you know, was somewhere around, you know, 80-plus percent of the of the ballots received. We are waiting for kind of final numbers from them. We will be able to have that analysis before the next BOSE meeting.
All right, thanks. That's it for me.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. I think we're gonna move you to the wings again. It looks like you have a question.
I I a comment mostly. I want to thank the council and mayor for their for their comments. But I'd also like to caution that if the the issue has been raised of of changing the timing and the date of the of the general of the of the city elections, and if we were to consider that in a timely manner for this year, this raises a lot of complications, which I would would hope we we could delay that discussion to a to a later date.
Yeah, I mean, certainly develop on Tom's, excuse me, Tom's comment. If we were to change the election cycle, that would require us to amend the city charter and make a number of other changes to the city code. So it would be one, I guess, very difficult to pull that off before the 2021 election. Not impossible, but it would put some serious time constraints. Bill?
Actually, I think Neil raised a good point, and I'd be interested in knowing the voter participation rate in a ballot that has municipal as part of the overall ballot. In other words, how much do we lose when you start going down ballot and, you know, the judges and the ballot questions in a presidential cycle? How much are we losing in the voter participation rate when you start getting down to like municipal elections? So that that actually raises, I never thought about that, but that raises an interesting point. I do agree that you tried to switch to a four-year based on our timetable right now seems kind of problematic. I'm kind of looking at it a little more long term. So I certainly understand based on the cycle that we're dealing with right now, that that might be problematic for this cycle, but I certainly down the road, that would be something that I would be interested in looking at. And I do understand you also, there are advantages to having it every two years, but also there's, there is significant cost savings if we were to go to four. But again, I wasn't suggesting it for this one, but I do think it's something worth looking at long term. So that was my other comment.
Ty?
I I agree. I wasn't looking at changing it for this coming cycle. It's just a matter of how we look at our numbers. And to Councilmember Spiegel's point, we are definitely not trying to make it more difficult or adding layers to allowing people to vote. We're trying to increase participation. And that's something that this group has been keenly cautious about and considerate about is making it, making, creating bureaucratic hurdles.
Okay, at this point, I think we will move to the the public comment portion of the meeting. So at this time, we will hear from the public. Comments from the public are limited to three minutes per person. But if anyone has additional comments, as, you know, we've provided earlier, you can submit them in writing to cityelections@gatherbergmd.gov through 5:00 PM on December 31st. Tech team, would you please play the video on how members of the public can participate? Tech team, would you please play the video on how members of the public can participate?
Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in, good evening. If you've connected to the meeting tonight via Zoom and you're on a desktop or a laptop and you wish to make a public comment, we can't currently see or hear you. What you need to do, please, is wiggle your mouse around and look towards the bottom center of your screen. You should see a raise hand button. Go ahead and click on that now for us, please. Alternatively, if you've connected in via telephone, you can press star nine.
Thank you. The tech team, if you could please pull up the first speaker. It looks like the speaker is Carl Van Ness. If you want to unmute and start your comments.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate your your making time available for me today. I wanted to say, you know, a six-point, a six to nine, you know, voting participation. You know, that's really bad and dramatic changes are really required here. And so I am for, you know, the hybrid election. I think something like three voting, three or maybe four voting centers are important. I think it's important that we have a voting center at Asbury. The seniors there, they're the, they're our biggest voters already. And, you know, it'd be a shame for for that not to continue to be a large voting area. Maybe the Kettelins and certainly Borah Park. I like the idea of voting every four years and on a presidential cycle. I think we need to change the car charter. I think we need to move forward with this. This is an action that we, I think we need to take, need to look at it closely because, you know, six to nine percent is is poor. And we need to do something about that. You know, we cannot continue along these lines in the future. You know, it really makes our elections look bad and it makes, you know, the great city of Gaithersburg look bad. So thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, tech team. Can you ping up the next speaker, please? The tech team, is there a speaker?
Hi, my name is Dave Belgar. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you very much. First of all, I'd really just like to say that I appreciate Gaithersburg investigating this and hosting this forum to discuss. Obviously, voting is a civil right and duty. And whatever we can do to encourage as many people to vote as reasonably possible is an excellent effort. I would like to just point out a few things when considering the various different options and how to implement them. I know there's some discussion about, in whichever option, how many voting centers to have and where to locate them. One thing I urge the council to keep in mind is that not all people, not all residents with our city have the same availability of transportation. Similar to not all residents in our city have the same availability of computers, which may be necessary to request ballots easily. These are important things to consider when thinking about whether to have a hybrid with how many stations to have or to have pure mail-in voting where you don't actually have to request the ballot. I'll also say that in this last cycle, I personally requested a mail-in ballot. And I found the experience to be somewhat frustrating, not terribly straightforward or easy. I did cast my vote successfully, as do my parents, who are obviously older, and they had even more difficulty with the request process. So that's all I wanted to point out, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Tech team, are there additional speakers?
There are no more.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. So at this point, we will turn back to the the BOFC to see if the board members have any final comments, questions.
When's our next meeting?
I do want to, just as a reminder, that residents can continue to submit your written comments through December 31st at cityelections@gaitersburgmd.gov. And we also urge our residents to complete the election survey, which is also available through December 31st and can be accessed on the city's website The board's next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, January 13th. And it's anticipated that that meeting, the board will make its recommendation to the mayor and city council on the voting method to be used in the upcoming election. We have tentatively scheduled the mayor and council's consideration of the board's recommendation at their February 1st regular mayor and council meeting. But we've also tentatively reserved a work session between those two dates on January 25th, if we think that that's necessary to have further discussion with with the mayor and council. So unless there are further questions or comments, is there a motion? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Bill or Tom, sorry.
I would just like to thank the both the the legal staff and the technical staff for putting on an excellent presentation with with no glitches, as far as I could tell. And thank the the council members and the mayor for their their time and their attention. And 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 to the and to the people who did comment for their succinctness.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Are there additional questions from the board, comments? Is there a motion?
A motion for the meeting to be adjourned?
I move.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Have a nice holiday.
Likewise.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.